Start recording. We lost, we lost a lot of that, sorry. So it's seven twenty-six and we started the meeting again at seven twenty or thereabouts and we lost, we weren't recording, sorry, everybody. Okay, so I just wanna, like, I wanna say just a quick comment back on the, it's a person's responsibility. My problem is if you get a dog, it shouldn't be my responsibility to put a fence on my yard. It shouldn't be my responsibility to put, you know, to wear noise cancelling headsets, right? And, and that's where I think we as a town do have statutory authority and could make our citizens' lives better by just saying, yes, there might be some punitive things for those few people who don't wanna comply with it. So, you know, and, and I just, I wanna speak a little bit about the overreach. We've done this a hundred percent in the open. We're not doing it behind the closed doors. We're not, you know, somebody mentioned a smoking gun. I'm like, wait a second, I don't think we could be any more transparent about the fact that we said we wanted to do a dog ordinance. So I just wanna say, like, the whole, I'm against any regulation kinda thing, doesn't cut it for me when we're talking about people who are taxpayers, just like everybody else, right? Who's, who, you know, so, and they don't, they can't control what their neighbors do, or, so, all right, thank you. Maureen, what are your thoughts?
I'm just wondering, it seems like surrounding towns, local towns also have a dog ordinance. I would like to look at or see if it was to the extent that as the VLCT model. I feel like the VLCT model was a little overreaching.
Yeah, I can tell you that I've looked at most of them, just glanced at them.
And I don't, and I don't know, I haven't seen any of the other towns, so I would like to, I mean, I can reach out to Whitingham and try to get a
copies of
You do, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I just downloaded them today, but they, they have the same running dogs running at large. Some of them, Marborough doesn't regulate barking dogs, but Gopher, you know, and Whiting, or Wilmington, I think, had the whole, the whole thing, right? Here's all the things. Now, some of them are from 2010, or, you know, they've been adopted in the past, but I don't see, didn't see anything that struck me as
You don't know if they use that model or not.
Originally?
The, the ones you downloaded, those.
I, I mean, from as a starting point?
Yeah, I would guess that they have. I would guess that they have, but I don't know, I mean, they, they don't, you don't keep the model piece on the top, right? But there's enough similarities between what I saw that I was like, yeah, it feels like there's a a standard layout and of course, they could have worked with their own attorney to do something special. But, but we can, we can provide that.
You know, so, I mean, I would just like to look at some of those.
Okay.
And, you know, maybe think of, of more of a simplified, simplified version, you know, leash law, maybe in the village. You know, those kinda things. I'm also a little worried, you know, with, with the, all the paperwork and the hours that would be involved with presumably Kyle, you know, when there's an issue, every time there's an issue. You know, I'm worried a little bit about that. But that's just where, you know, I, I'm not saying no. I just would like it a little more simplified if that's possible.
Yeah, okay.
And I just know the VLCT, I know a lot of people when it talked about impounding and destroying dogs, and I know it's the legal jargon that's in the, the model. But that, I think probably upset a lot of people.
It's, it's definitely a last resort kind of thing, right? It's not, it's, it's not necessarily the first thing that happens, right? So that's what, that's what you can do when you're crafting the ordinance is say, you know.
I just feel like when people read that, though, it does something to your, I mean, it did to me.
And, and I will say that a huge part of moving forward needs to be educating the public, getting over the hurdles of the fear, right? Your fear, like, oh, how is this gonna apply for me? Trying to come up with the simple scenarios where it might need to be used, right? And just kind of talking people through it so that they don't have this, like, gee, my whole world is changing, right? It's something that we've had an ordinance in the past. We managed to survive as a town with an ordinance from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and sixteen. You know, so, yeah.
You know, and I just, I'm, I find it hard to believe. I don't understand if somebody has a dog that barks twenty-four seven. Really, how do we make them stop? How, how?
That's, that's a fair question in terms of the
Worries me.
Problem, but, you know, that, the, the causes of that, the causes of the twenty-four seven, I mean, again, depending on when you were, if, if they're barking at two in the morning, you might not be getting any sleep, or you might not be there, so you might not know. I do think that the time that they put, you know, for continuous barking was like three hours. I mean, if a dog is barking for three hours, it'd be nice if somebody did something, right? Just a second, Jason, let me, let me get through the whole board. Okay.
So, all right.
I think, I guess first I was surprised when you asked us for a quick vote last time. I was, that
Wasn't a vote, it was a
Or an indication of something, but it was, it was still, it was a, you know, it amounted to a, anyway, so I was sort of surprised. So I'm not quite sure exactly how I responded in the moment, but I think that there have been enough complaints and concerns where people have come to a meeting and said, this has happened, and I have not you know, gone out and done a big survey, but if there are enough people who are worried and concerned, and there is a gap between what the state would ordinarily cover and what we as a town can do to help people be comfortable walking the streets, right, or being in their own driveways. My concern is much more along the vicious dog part of it, because physical safety, being afraid to go to, you know, we've heard people say, well, I don't even wanna walk out of my door, right, in case, what if that, it's that kinda thing. So, you know, I didn't feel that we needed to have an overwhelming number of people in town saying that was a problem. If, and if people think it's a problem and we can't do something more than say, have neighbors talk to each other and say, please, can you do this? In some, in, in some cases, sure, you talk to your neighbors and it's, it's essentially resolved, and that is great. And so then nothing happens beyond that, but if it's a situation that, that doesn't happen and somebody or their animals are badly injured, where's the liability for that? Right? Where, where is that liability? And is there anything we can do? And I don't, the whole destruction of an animal, that is not a vote I would ever wanna take, right? I don't want anybody destroyed. That unless, I mean, there would have to be, like, you know, it makes the news, somebody's face is mauled off, right? But I guess for me, I think having something that gives Kyle the ability to say, look, we've tried the conversation, we've tried to do this, and if it's a fine, you know, then there are rules and we didn't get a chance to get into the document and into the drafting, and I think it was premature to have that conversation on that night, when it was the very first time the board had been able to see it. Now, yes, we had received it in advance. But from a, from a process, I guess, maybe in retrospect, it would have been, you know, 'cause everybody knows that anytime you have an ordinance, there are gonna be people on both sides of the equation. And so, you know, you have, we have put a committee of interested citizens and Sue, you know, comes from various disciplines where it's very sort of helpful guidance for that committee. But maybe the committee needs to be able to talk to other people in town, and maybe folks who have been less thrilled about this. So say, is there some language we can get to? And then, if hopefully there is some language, can then come to the board with something that people can say, you know, you know, this is manageable, so, you know, I think maybe, Maureen, your point, if it's a sort of a more of a skinned down version of an ordinance, and maybe it only happens in a couple of situations. I mean, we've got ordinances on here that, you know, are pretty pretty small in what they're covering, right? So it's not a big broad thing. I don't know what the right answer is, but I really want everybody in town to feel safe. I want everybody in town who, who have animals to feel that their animals are safe. I wanna be able to go out with my dog and feel safe and have my dog also off leash. Right? Everybody, you know, we're all up here and we love being in this rural place and we wanna be off leash. If my dog attacks somebody, I'd be horrified, right? I would be absolutely horrified. Then it's up to the person whose dog it is to figure out what the right response is. But if that, there would be a conversation, but if that dog keeps, my dog keeps attacking someone, there, there needs to be a way for someone to say, you just gotta stop. We don't want your dog destroyed. We don't want this, but you need to figure out a way to make this stop. But you can only, my understanding is, and I haven't talked directly to Kyle, but my understanding is, he's limited into what he can do to get somebody to, to do something for the public good and their neighbors, which you would think everybody would just plain want to do. Sometimes people just don't. For whatever reason, they can't control their dog, or whatever the animal is, so I think that's kind of where I'm coming from. It's not a, every single dog in the place has to do one thing or another. And I don't, my impression was, and, and it was a very, like I said, a robust conversation, I don't think the committee got a chance to say, this is our intent of when it would be used and under what circumstances it might be used.
So I've heard a, to summarize, you're okay with continuing to work on the ordinance, but it needs
In a
Work and we need to figure
In a narrow scope.
The right, and a narrow scope with the right process. Okay.
Oh, boy, here we go. Well, you know, a lot of people are upset, and I've had a lot of calls on this, so, they, and it just seems too overwhelming, that, with that, all that packet stuff we got, there's too much in it, that's,
So
I, I don't think, I, I wouldn't support it.
As is, as the first draft, would you support something that was?
I don't think so, because I think, I think we're gonna get deep in the weeds. I think, I think it's just gonna get, it's gonna escalate and, and I don't know.
Okay.
You know what I mean? I, I think we're just gonna get overhead, I think. But I think a lot of people, they're mad. They don't want it. They really don't.
And, and they have, they actually have the right to petition to say, we don't
Right, they do.
So they
At town meeting, they
So they, so they have that, they have that option, but
Right.
But, but I, you know, I think, I do think that part of the process is trying to figure out the why. Like, why is this so concerning to people? Is it a concern about, I might have to pay a fine? Is it a concern about, I don't know how to train my dog?
Well, you know, they're saying, well, you know, I got, my taxes are high enough. I don't, I don't want another fine on top of that, if I got a dog and it's, and it's barking, or it's, you know what I mean?
But if we change it to just a potentially vicious dog, and it's a narrow scope, and it's not, is it on a leash, it's not, you know, it's like, is somebody, if, if my dog came onto your driveway, and I'm just, and I'm, I'm
No, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, but if my dog, who's, who's fairly mild-mannered, but surprised me off leash and came on and scared you on your, scared you in your driveway.
Yeah.
And I was like, ah, the heck with you, Rhonda. I'm just gonna keep walking down here. We're gonna, we're gonna do this every day. Right?
Yeah.
That, that's, I think, that, so then what do you do? You call Kyle and Kyle's like, well, Karen's a jerk. I can't do anything. Right? What do you, I mean, and I'm, but Kyle never said anybody was a jerk.
No, 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 no.
But that, that, I think that's what I was hoping early on in this process, where we would get to that, that very minimal situation where people are feeling threatened, there's evidence of some kind.
I haven't seen, who was the people that got threatened?
So people, people who spoke at the last meeting included Jessica Cooney, who is here again.
Was here, yeah.
Linda Lyons spoke, Linda Hubner spoke, and Chris and Ken were, Chris and
Kim.
Kim, we're here.
And I've been, and then I've been menaced in my driveway.
Yeah.
There's nothing, I mean, I was able to look scarier than I felt, but
She spoke as well, right?
So it happens.
It's not like, this is, it's not like this is coming from one person, nor, I wanna say, is it directed towards any specific past incident, right? It's like, what do we do going forward? That's what, I know, like, it's, yes, we're gonna all apply situations in our head, but the idea is we create some new ground rules going forward, and it may only be, here's, here are the steps we're gonna take if there is a potentially vicious dog that is out there, right? All right, I'm gonna, I think what I'm hearing is that there's not a, there's three people who are maybes, and there's two people who would be like, probably not, and, but we have the potential to create an ordinance that then can go out to the voters if they think that they can live with it. Let me ask Sue if you wanna speak as the chair of the committee.
Oh, sure, thank you. And so, yeah, I was so sorry, I wasn't able to be here last Tuesday, but I did listen to the recording of the meeting, and I got the impression that a lot of the opposition was due to misunderstandings of what the ordinance actually would say. It is difficult, because there is a lot of legalese in there, but legalese winds up in ordinances for a reason. It's because things need to be narrowly enough defined that it's not discretionary. There is, this is correct and this is incorrect. So that's a real tough one, and I understand people not liking all that. But I do really feel as though people were afraid that they wouldn't be able to have their dog loose on their own property, or, you know, that if they could control their dog, they'd not lose, have to have their dog on leash, and things like that, that were misunderstandings, I think, really resulted in a, a much larger proportion of people being opposed to it than if they had really been willing to stop and hear what the ordinance actually was saying. So that was really, really rather frustrating for me to, to have that, have that misunderstanding out there. I do feel as though there was also concern that the survey was admittedly quite imperfect. But the purpose of that survey was just to get a snapshot, you know, of where we're, where sentiments lay. And it was really our, you just know, as whether we as a committee continue forward or not. And we decided that enough people were expressing concerns on all three of the issues on, on the survey, that yes, we should proceed to make an attempt. So the person who was saying in the meeting last week about, well, how many complaints have there been, or how many incidents have there been, I don't think that's a relevant question. I think the relevant question is how many, how many people express concern, and if a few people express concern, and as, as you know, a number of people have expressed problems, then I feel it's the responsibility of the town to protect those people. And if it's, I don't think that it's just because most people feel that there should be no control, that the town should say, okay, there's no control. That leaves people who are really not able to enjoy our public roadways. So that's a concern that I think should still be on the table.
Jason, you've been very patient. May I ask you for your perspective?
You spoke last week, and you told us your story of the incident that you had, correct?
Um.
Your dog incident, if you encountered, you spoke about.
Trying to recall if I spoke about my dog.
Is that growing up?
Growing up.
Is that growing up?
I don't know. Nobody ever classified when, why, or how, you just told us a story.
I think, I think I might have said that I, growing up, that I
Yeah, that was a personal story.
That was, that was, that was a personal story.
I don't know, you see, that, that's the part I don't know.
So, yes, I, so I shared, I shared my feelings about, and my concerns about trying to come to this as a leader of the community and say, like, these are hard issues. I, I can tell you that I have been with other people who have been concerned about dogs in the road in Halifax. That's, you know, but it's, I can't say for myself that I've had an incident where I would necessarily speak to the speak to the animal control officer to say, can you help me with this, right? And I can tell you that, like, my reaction, I, I tend to deal with conflict, conflict pretty directly mostly, but my reaction, when I, when I had a dog come out, when I was walking around the road, was to not walk that part of the road anymore. Now, it wasn't only because of the dog safety, I'll tell you that there was also traffic safety concerns, but, you know, it does influence people, right, whether they can enjoy that. So I don't know if that helps get to your point, which is more important.
I guess I'm sitting here, and I mean no disrespect, please believe me. I'm sitting here and I'm, I'm watching you with your board, and I'm watching you, and this seems like a personal crusade by you.
I, I think for me, I decided that, yes, I probably was being a champion of it, but the part of the reason is because so many of the people who have concerns about it didn't call me. But I've had people call me and say, this is what's happening, and I'd be like, you can try to talk to Kyle, and then I learned that Kyle really couldn't do anything.
But you yourself just said you were with people.
Sure, but I, I can't say that it's a personal crusade that I am forcing on the town. I am bringing it up because I've had enough people in town say this is a problem. I don't, I'm not a dog owner myself. I don't have a dog that I'm targeting. I, I'm just trying to say, it feels to me like everybody in this town pays taxes, and everybody ought to be able to enjoy the public goods that we have. And so the rights of
It's easy to take freedom away. It's hard to get it back.
So I think there's freedom from, though, too, right? Freedom from fear, freedom from fear. Freedom from noise that I cannot
Who's in fear, though?
Certainly some of the people who spoke have said that they are in fear that their, their their animals have been approached, or they're concerned about their children. So I think there's fear on that side. I can also frankly sense fear on, on other parts of other people who are like, I'm concerned that this is gonna impact me. Maybe I'm concerned that I will have something, you know, like, I'll have to do something different in my day to day, but your, your animals are, you know, not, they're, they're free to roam on your own properties, is, is that idea of running at large? Presuming we pursue that piece of it, right?
So I was the one that asked for the percentage of numbers. I'm very curious. How much does this cost, this whole undertaking?
So that, I think that there are some potential costs, but let me say, let me explain this, right? If we were to say, instead of having a town animal control officer, but we were to go to Wyndham County Sheriff's Office and ask them to do that, that cost last, I, last year, when we looked at it, would have been twenty-seven something, two thousand seven hundred and something, right now, we budget
Sorry, I misunderstood.
Two thousand seven hundred dollars. It's like a per capita thing, right? So it might change and the price might go up. Right now, we budget five thousand dollars for our town constable and animal control officer. So that cost could potentially change, right?
What about dog boarding? Obviously, if you have to go in and you have to take some of these dogs from these people, there's costs incurred. Am I correct by saying that?
There are costs incurred if you are boarding. We do have a contract with Wyndham County Humane Society to do the boarding. If the people are going to try to get their dog back, then that cost of boarding would be, they would need to pay that before they could get the dog if, if it were impounded.
And what about costs on lawsuits?
I don't, I can't speak to that, obviously. I don't have a
I suppose you have to draw a picture.
Sure.
We were talking about putting a law into effect.
Yeah.
We need to look at the broad picture.
Yes, and we will, and we will. Yeah, we absolutely do need through the process. I agree. Yeah.
For sure, and then, but also looking at the cost and what is the liability if there is a known vicious animal that really hurts somebody.
Correct.
Right? And the town knew about it and didn't take the steps that all the neighboring towns would have otherwise taken, and that this attack that hasn't happened, and, and it hasn't been close to happening, but I think this is, I think the idea is
So there
Where's the liability for that? Because I would be really, really worried about that, and this is gonna be a really weird story, so I'm sorry. But you've all seen, probably, in Stanford, Connecticut, a woman had a chimpanzee, and this is gonna sound goofy, but she had a chimpanzee and it was a pet.
I can remember something like
And a friend, a friend came over and knew this chimpanzee quite well. Chimpanzee was big and powerful. Chimpanzee didn't recognize the friend.
Right.
She had a different haircut, ripped off the woman's face,
Yep.
bit her hands off.
Yeah, I remember that.
The town of Stanford, I believe, the city had, you know, a real problem on its hands because of enforcement of this kind of animal.
Correct.
This happened to be, like, who would have a chimpanzee? That seemed pretty straightforward. But I think when you talk about legal liability, you look at legal liability on the extremes of what could happen. Like, the worst-case situations, right? Not the liability of some dog ran out onto the road because I was out jogging, and the dog was like, somebody's running, I'm gonna run out there, right? That's a very different situation.
What is the cutoff of a vicious dog?
Well, I don't know, we, that's what we have to talk about, right? I mean, that's the conversation.
We really are in the process of drafting, right? So all of this conversation can inform that, and it sounds to me like we have enough people on the board who wanna move forward with that process. Again, we, you know, we will have further meetings that will describe, you know, we have to first of all, sit down and, and hash through it, right?
Yeah.
There will be other opportunities for people to give input and express concerns.
Question.
What, sure.
How many incidences are recorded of dog attack?
So, so again, the, I think part of the problem is that people aren't report, haven't reported it for years.
I don't know if I believe that. It's so easy to pick up the phone and call the cops. It is so easy nowadays. I don't think I believe that.
I, I don't, I don't know, but I can, I can tell you that I have a, a person who mentions a, a bike in Halifax to me. She was, it was a person. I do not know the circumstances of it. She was a resident from another town. So again, that never came to the board.
Did she take the time to come in and record it?
It never, it never came to the board, so, again.
That's what I don't understand. It, it seems to be falling on yeah, we wanna do it, but nobody wants to report the problem to begin with.
I, I think that's in part because there's, there's little recourse that we have, right? If I can't ask, like, so first of all, I, I also wanna say, a lot of people are just like, I don't wanna say anything, 'cause it's my neighbor. I don't wanna, I don't wanna create a bad relationship, and I understand that, but then they're giving up again, some of their rights for the other, for the dog owners' rights that, you know, that they're, so we, we wanna get to a point where we are like, it is okay to discuss these issues, but I, I, I know, to your point, I, I don't, I don't have, like, a comprehensive list of how many people have had issues before, right? We keep getting that.
So Jason, if I could, if I could ask, Jason, how many?
One second, please.
No, no, my, my turn, my turn.
I gotta finish this conversation before I forget. I'm so
Okay, no, go, go ahead, go ahead.
Wait.
All right, I'll bring it back. This will bring it back. Maybe this will bring it back. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, that was, you're right.
What are we talking about?
We're talking about wanting to have incidents documented, so.
Yes.
Nobody calls.
So I guess my question to that is, is how far did you guys as a board go before you brought it to the public?
Well, we have to do our business in the public, so what, what we have done, I mean, like, again, each of us has been on the board.
Yeah, but there's line work that has to be done before it's brought to the pub, the public. Am I correct by saying, saying so?
Well, that's what the committee Okay.
So, yeah, so the subcommittee.
Okay, can I, may I ask you to repeat what you said, so that I could hear?
Yeah, I think Jason heard it, but, yeah, the, the, the work that Jason is asking about wasn't necessarily done by the select board, it was done by the subcommittee.
In open meetings.
Those are all, the meetings are recorded, they're registered, that's all publicly available.
That is correct.
The select board, the meeting last week was the first sign that the select board has dealt with this issue.
Okay, my question is, how long have you guys been working on it?
Honestly, when did we start?
You, you mentioned last time that we had had seven meetings, so we had seven more meetings where people from the public had the opportunity to come and listen and contribute to our discussion and development of the proposed ordinances. It's a little like the whole problem with the taxes, isn't it? You know, people will complain about how, how the taxes are, but they never came for the budget meetings. And, you know, so it's like, if you want to take, you know, if you want to have a, a say in things, you have to participate in the process.
Yeah.
Why do you see things coming up?
Yay.
Let me, let me go to Jessica, 'cause she hit her hand up just before you did.
I gotta go. I just wanted to say, I, like, I had issues with dogs. I didn't know there was anybody who could help. And if we could tell someone, my concern was, when, when anything is done, according to the meeting last week, that there was nothing to be done. So my concern is who I go to, and what is to be done. And I would rather have something to be done before my child gets bit.
So are you saying you're afraid of calling the cops?
She's so Yeah, but I think, and I think, so one of the things, one of the things I think will be helpful, just again, to make sure that we're Yeah, but I think, and I think, um, so one of the things, one of the things I think will be helpful just again to make sure that we're not. Um, being confrontational to others is, please, please direct, okay, please direct your questions to me though. And. And so the question of, you know, if you don't know who to call. And you're not concerned enough to call the cops, you know, like, you know, it's not a nine one one call. The dog is not necessarily in your face at that moment. You presumably gotten yourself.
Nine one one call, but it's, it's, it's good enough to change the walls of a town.
It's, it's a matter of looking at risk and benefit. And I think that there's still, in my perspective, and in, at this point, it sounds like three out of five. Select board members to keep the conversation going so that we can try to come to that understanding. And we can try to make it clear to people, who do you call? You can call the select board. You can call and tell us. I'm gonna tell you to talk to the people who don't want an ordinance. Only because I'm trying to get something in place to protect people, right? So I mean, that's. That's where we are. We're at the point where we do not have. Much that we can do. You can certainly call Kyle and and he will try to work it out between people to the extent that he can. But he also has to feel like he has some tools in his toolkit to say to people. I'm sorry, I know it's kind of a pain to chain your dog up when you're not there Saturday morning, but maybe that's the right solution for that. Um, so.
Thing though, in this moment, like Kyle can't do anything.
In this moment, I would still suggest for the moment that you call Kyle. And that you say, here's something that's happening. Can you help me? He, he, being a central point of contact, might be able to tell you if, oh yes, that's already been discussed with that homeowner, right? But we can't find that person. We can't, we can't put any other restrictions on them. If it's not, if it doesn't come to a level of unfortunately, a dog biting a human. Like, that's pretty much what we're limited to. And I will also say, cause I don't wanna keep saying this too. If there is a situation that you think the humane society needs to be involved, call. Right? That he knows how to get the right people who are trained as humane officers to kind of deal with that. But yeah. Yeah. And I, and I know again, to i- if if you know who the person is and you're comfortable saying like, I ran into your dog again. But you might not know.
You may not just know that. Sometimes I don't know. Yeah. Sometimes you don't wanna say.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's unfortunate too. Did you have something else?
I do, um. So one of the things that came out of the meeting last week to me was it, I think it made it apparent that we. Had approached things perhaps out of order in terms of. Getting, getting public comments, having a very public discussion. Not that this should be hidden from public, absolutely, but. Uh, it it made it clear to me that there should be more consensus among the board, the select board on. The, the three, namely the three individual ordinances that are under discussion. So the question that I wanted to pose to each member of the board at the start of this, uh, and I still will. Is to that effect. And I I kind of have some of the answer already, but. The question is for, for each of the three things. It's a vicious dog, it's a dog at large, it's a nuisance dog, just to kind of paraphrase. Set aside the language of uh of the ordinance and set aside the penalties and and all of that stuff. For each of you, for for each of those three things, should there be some mechanism in place? To protect residents, to give residents some recourse when there is a nuisance dog, when there is a vicious dog, when there is a dog at large. So I, and mostly, uh, that's, that's, that's you, Randy, and and to some extent you, Ron, because you, your, your position seemed to be. Not in favor of the ordinance. And I'm, I'm curious, without an ordinance, what recourse does a resident have for those scenarios?
Um, but I actually mentioned that the other night. So first of all. I mean, I think everybody knows if you really think about it, a law doesn't prevent anything.
Understood.
Um, we all pass few limit signs probably every day and. On occasion, I'm sure we're breaking that law.
Yeah.
Um, but. The. It, again, it's me, it would be an owner's responsibility. So there are, um, there is some state case law about dog bites. Um. The, the first thing that should happen is if, if I encounter a vicious dog or I encounter or I'm bitten by a dog. I should probably call the police. Um, to have a record of that. Um, at that point. Uh, it's still between the owner and and me. Um. Is there recourse? Yes. I mean, at that point, I can contact an attorney and say, you know, something needs to be done here.
Sure.
Um. I just don't like the idea of making an individual's dog. Um, the town's responsibility. I just don't think that that's. The right way to go.
And so the, the scenario is described though, you're, you're putting. You're putting the responsibility on the victim essentially. You're making the victim's responsibility to go back to the owner. And we agree, like, the, the default option for, for any conflict should be neighbor and neighbor, one on one, explicit. All the ordinances under discussion here were written with the intent of addressing scenarios where that fails. Where either the owner doesn't respond, doesn't care, doesn't whatever. And that's where, to me, that's where the ordinances come into play. Frankly, I think it's going to be, the ordinances are going to be invoked pretty infrequently. I think most things can be resolved face to face. But that's the point of this is to have something for when the face to face fails. And it starts to become a problem for whatever, some number of individuals, who knows what that number is, but it's, it's more than zero. I can personally guarantee that. Um, so for those scenarios, what, what you're describing then is, well, it's, it's the victim's problem. They gotta sort it out. They gotta go get a lawyer. They gotta put a defense. They gotta go talk to their neighbor again. And to me, that's a violation of individuals' rights. It's a violation of property rights. Those are the things to me that are fundamentally being, being protected by having this ordinance. Totally get your point that laws only work for people who follow them, but right now we have nothing for cases like this where. It it doesn't matter to, to the owner what's happening. And again, I'll say it repeatedly. I've said it on, on the subcommittee meetings that we have. The overwhelming majority of dogs are good dogs. The overwhelming majority of dog owners are good dog owners, but. The ordinance is for that small percentage that don't fall into those categories and. Uh, the reason that I say that, that the previous comment is I think that small percentage is going to result in. This is not gonna be a full-time job for Kyle. There's gonna be a few things here and there. Maybe it's once a year, maybe it's five times a year. Uh, but if it, if it's really the non-issue that a lot of people said it was in the last meeting, then. This notion of, of an overwhelming cost associated with it to me is, is uh, is a non-issue. You know, if, if there aren't any dog bites, if there aren't any dog attacks, there's no, no reason for Kyle to be involved. Uh, so I, I, I don't see that concern of, 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 over overwhelming cost associated with to be legitimate. So, uh, but I appreciate, appreciate your response, Ron. Did you have some thoughts on, you know, whether it's a vicious dog or a dog at large or whatever, what? What, absent an ordinance, what's your thought on, on how a resident should address this when, when there's a trespass or a bite or whatever?
Well. I just think that people think their, their rights are getting taken away. For having a dog that, I, I know it sounds foolish, but. That's what they think. You know, back when I, back when I was eight years old, I was riding my bike. From my parents' house, I got, no longer got down like five hundred feet. A big shepherd come out, broke his chain. And bit me. Before I got back home, the guy that owned him shot him. And I felt, yeah, so I, I haven't, so I've been bit. You know, but it just needs. There's just so much. Unknown.
People's rights being taken away here.
Because they, they don't wanna have to. Uh, what's the word? They wanna be able to have a dog and let it off a leash on their property.
So do I.
Uh, you know, I'm like, well. I don't do that either. I, I walk mine everywhere, but.
The, I think one thing that I don't know if, if, if we made it clear. The subcommittee made it clear is that. Every single thing in the ordinance. Is triggered by one thing, like Kyle is never involved until one thing happens. And that one thing is a resident filing a complaint. It doesn't mean that Kyle's gonna be out there looking for dogs on the prowl. Doesn't mean that he's gonna be going out trying to write tickets. He only gets involved if a resident calls and files a complaint. So if there's nobody filing complaints right now, it's probably not, it's probably not going to be a big thing for him, but. If, if there are people filing complaints, then seems like there's an issue to deal with.
Well, what do you do if, if like, uh, somebody files a complaint and the dog's not even registered? Or doesn't have a, what do you do then? When, don't have rabies, shot or anything.
Well, I think there's a state ordinance in place for that already.
Yeah, but.
But i- if there's.
Yeah, yeah, right. Yeah.
Yeah, so i- it sounds like you're saying.
You do realize this is the country, right?
But, uh. Yeah, it's, so you're, I, I guess what you're saying.
Kyle goes to a.
This dog is so in violation of the law than than.
But the thing is, if he goes to get somebody's, like somebody don't have their dog registered and don't have shots.
Yeah.
If he goes there, they just say, well, I'm babysitting, so. Yeah, that's cool. You know, I don't have to get my dog have a shot.
You're saying they don't wanna take responsibility.
Right, they don't wanna take responsibility. So how do you, how do you enforce that? I mean.
Well, don't we already do that with the licensing program if somebody's licensed?
All they gotta say is, well, I'm, I'm watching this, these dogs from my friend. Okay, you can't prove anything, so. You know what I mean? So I, I don't know.
Well, I think, but I think that, I, I think that's a.
I'm getting off track here.
No, 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 no. I mean, I get your point. People, people are calling you and that's, that's a legitimate sort of concern. And I think where. The original question is vicious, at-large and nuisance, right? So if you're talking about an at-large dog, it doesn't have a license, it doesn't have whatever.
Yeah.
You know, that, that, that wouldn't, maybe wouldn't happen. Um, and maybe I'm, you know, for me, the, the issue for me is. Vicious.
Yeah.
Or some, something has been designated one. And I'm sure there's rules and protocols and, you know, Sue, you. Have had some, you know, a lot more experience there that, that this is what, this is what. Happens and then that dog is a vicious dog for whatever reason. Um, but I, you know, I take your point. Yeah, there's people who don't pay to get their dog's license, don't pay to do different things. I don't think anybody wants to restrict. Dogs running on their own property and doing whatever they want.
People are thinking that you're gonna take.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't think.
Your own property, there's no.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they don't see it that way. I think.
Yeah, but I don't think the town, I can't restrict, none, none of us can restrict what each other does on their own property, right?
So people are pissed off.
So I think see Eddie's point, we get through over the fear part, right? So the, this is, if you say, okay, well, that's. You know, what are the list of fears? And maybe there's a dozen of them. I'm like, okay. We get through all of these and then you're left with one or two and then you have a decision.
It's like that dog that we took, remember Hal? They named him Hal with that. We took him to the Humane Society.
Oh, with a leg?
With a leg. He had his leg amputated. Uh, I think, what did we pay? Fifteen hundred for that to get him?
From the town?
Yeah.
Eleven or twelve hundred.
I thought it was fifteen.
Yeah, okay. It was, it was, it was a fair amount.
It was.
It is only happened that one time.
Yeah, I know. I'm just saying.
So that people understand that is one of the reasons that there is a fee with your license, right? So that we can. Cover that in the, on, in the occasional circumstances where it happens. Yeah.
Then, then there's the wrong people are talking about the money thing. Yeah.
So the flip side to the rights being taken away question is, uh, you know, a lot of what was, when folks called in last week and, and. If it's Karen or or Edie, the, the point that was made around. Uh, when dogs are coming out and meeting people on the street or chasing people on the street or attacking people or other dogs on the street. The, their rights are being taken away. Like the right, it's a public road. We have the right to be able to walk down that without getting attacked or getting chased.
True.
So.
Have you been?
Yes. So I, I haven't made our story public or part of this discussion at all for very specific reasons and kind of to Edie's point. I don't want it to be about our specific incident. I don't want it to be about any one specific incident. When you have enough incidents where it kind of has a critical mass, it starts to become a problem.
You have it on the, you have it on a complaining committee. With personal. Leaves.
Correct, Jason, but.
Attacked. So it's like if you have personal.
Yes.
Problems of being attacked.
You can go back and listen to our meetings. They're not riveting. I can tell you that, right? I, I hear. I've said a number of times on those meetings, I do not want the default to be to punish the majority for the few. I don't want the default to be. Dogs have to be.
Kind of what it seems though, though, for a lot of people out there that I've been hearing.
So that's, that's why we're having this conversation.
It is.
Yeah. I think there's some legitimate objections to how the things are written, but I also think there's a lot of points that especially made clear last week that people. Had the wrong impression about what these ordinances are trying to do and how they're trying to go about it. But back to your question. Um, I haven't made our story part of this.
But it, but it is a personal stake.
We were asked to be involved in the committee.
Yeah.
We didn't, we didn't, we didn't pursue the committee. We didn't join it to pursue it. We were asked to be part of it.
Yeah.
Um. To Edie's point though, it, it shouldn't be about any one person's story.
Great.
There are a number of stories and as you start to look around and hear people call in. And seeing what happened around our incident, leading up to our incident, there were a lot of other people impacted by this. Rather than just the one incident where our dog was attacked.
Ooh.
So we're, so, so, so Jason, Jason, let me, let me, let me just, let me, let me explain something to you for a minute, Jason. One of the things we have to do here is we have to be very careful. We live in a small town. And I try very hard not to point fingers and not to assign blame. We are not here to do that tonight and, and we do not wish to do it in the process.
Ma'am, so be no disrespect to anybody sitting here. I'm just trying to get the facts.
And so the facts are something I will say, again, there are times when situations are not to be privy for the entire community. If there is a situation where there is an animal control need such as for humane society.
You're on the right wall.
I can do that. I can do that with general, generalities.
Situation.
We, uh, we can do that with generalities as well as. All of us are informed by our life experience, whether you've been bitten as a kid, whether you had dogs growing up and. You know, whatever it is, every one of us has come into this, but, but the process of creating the ordinance. We, I think we've heard enough tonight to say, we're gonna try to move forward. We, we have to do it in the public. We will continue to do that in the public. But we're not here to, to assign blame to anyone. That's not what we're doing here.
We're not trying to blame anybody.
Right, so thank you. I, 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 you're asking for specific information and we are not gonna share.
Trying to understand the situation of why it's going down.
I think the wire going into direct. A lot of people, maybe we should think about moving on.
I think we should wrap this.
Take, take Christine.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, I see that there's some stuff in the chat. There are people online. Um, and I acknowledge that because we went way past this on, on this conversation. I think the answer to the question, how do we move forward with the dog ordinance is. We continue to move forward with it. I think we need to basically redraft what we have. Um, and the question is then, how do we do that? Sounded like some people were thinking sending it back to the committee made some sense. I will say that the select board is the one that is ultimately responsible for it. And the LCT sort of said, keep a tight handle on this. I tried to say, don't wander off the ranch, guys, you know, stick to the words that are there. Do we want to take another time? And I, I think we, we have to have some sort of meeting in the public where we sort of. Get all these feelings out, right? We need, we need a bigger like timeframe. We can't do it in an hour and a half.
No.
And so we do need to have a bigger meeting, but we also have to write the damn thing so that we know what we're arguing about.
Yeah, well, I think, I, maybe I was the one that brought it up. I think. For me, as. A member of the select board. And a resident and a taxpayer. I would like to see people feel safe. My focus is on. The vicious dog one, not any of the others, right?
Yeah.
The, the others, you know, there's a lot to be said for every single one of them and people have different views, but I think that would be a bridge too far. To get the, you know, anything beyond the vicious dog. I think it's hard to. Say that, no, we don't, we want vicious dogs. Everybody, you should, if you have a vicious dog, you ought to be able to have it. And I don't.
Halifax, we don't have an ordinance yet.
So, so, and, and I think as a, as a member of the select board. Who, like all of us. Has limited bandwidth to do a lot of things. Stuff that we do in the meetings in the public and stuff that we do in the background. That I know I dropped the ball on two or three, you know, however many things, right? I know I have. So I, the next time an ordinance in whatever form it's in comes. I think it should be, and I don't care if we don't get it done at town meeting. And we have to wait another, I mean, the, the process will take as long as the process takes. And I don't think we should run fast and hard to stuff something to meet a timeframe. If it means we have to have conversations and if the committee, subcommittee chooses to move forward and. Talk to different people and draft things in a certain way, to me, something.
To me, something that comes back that is more reflective of that kind of a process. It's, it's easier. I don't think, given our timeframe, and now we're moving into budget season. That we then have to spend meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting, deciding what clause to be. You know, two A, you know, slash seven should be, right? I think that's something, so in, from my perspective, I'd like to. Ask the committee if they're amenable to look at it in a slightly different way. And it's gonna take as long as it's gonna take. If. Things can, if they can be a good conversation, there can be a, a, a defensible. Ordinance for me for vicious dogs, and it can be presented at town meeting, that's first prize. But if it can't be presented at town meeting, that doesn't mean that I would say, well, then let's not do it. I think the process is gonna take as long as the process takes.
Okay, so what I heard was that you would advise that we continue to use the animal, the committee for animal control. And ask them to bring us a draft back that only focuses on vicious dogs.
Yes.
Is that amenable to the committee chair?
Yes. Okay, well, is, is that, I mean, what is the rest of the committee thing? I, it's not, that's just, I was just, my, I'm one of five.
I would think that would be a start, okay. Um, and I wish the committee could somehow have more of people who are in opposition so that you really know what's. Is bothering people about everything, you know, and I, I know it's a public meeting, I, I get that.
They can do that. They can have conversations if someone says, you know.
I would just wish some.
Cause I think the, the, the misunderstanding of what the. Goal of the ordinance is has caused a lot of. Angst.
Yes.
Miss, and anger, yeah, but.
Okay, so.
We're way over.
We are way over.
Way over.
We're way over, and I'm gonna say that, again, all the time that we're spending here, it's important for us for a couple of reasons.
Yeah, I know.
Number one, it's important for us to build our relationship as a board. Truly appreciate everybody who's sitting on this board, even when I dislike what you're saying. Okay, and even when I know you. All of that to say, the other thing that we are trying to do i- in, in an underground fashion is build community. And I appreciate the foes who have come. I appreciate those who challenge us. But I also do have to protect our time a little bit as a committee. So I appreciate those who have volunteered on the committee. Um, I hope that if you are willing to carry forward, that I will continue to be your support and liaison. Just because you need somebody to get you in the room, first of all. Um, but, but I also, I mean, again, I'm, I'm not, I've decided that, um, I'm not a member of the committee. But I'm, I'm also a member of this board, and to the extent that I can help convey information between the two. That is fine. I don't know that I will stay to every meeting. Um, and if people think that I'm biased. Live with it, I guess. I don't know how, how else to say that, right? I mean, I'm doing my best to try to help the community. I'm trying to serve the community. And that means hearing from everybody. But also trying to get the work done to bring it to fruition. Yeah.
So I can't promise, I, you just asked me whether I, as, as the chair of the committee, would be willing to, to work on this ordinance again. I can't speak for the whole committee. I don't know yet whether the other four people would be willing to continue work on this, so.
Okay.
I will have to get back to you on that.
Okay.
Yeah, fair, that's perfectly, yeah, fair point.
And then I will say that, uh, should anybody else wish to volunteer their time, please let the select board know we will consider that. I don't like necessarily the idea of, you know. Padding the committee when the committee's already been working together, but, you know, you're always welcome to go and express your opinion there. Um, again, please, please be respectful of the chair who has work to do to try to manage the meeting. Great, we're moving on. Audit update, five minutes.
Is there anything that we need to check on with the?
Any, anything online that we need to worry about? Um, Emily, I don't know if you've been checking the chat.
Yeah. So. Okay. Uh, we've recorded the.
Well, it isn't before it responds.
Does Kyle truly not have the authority to respond?
Not until there's an ordinance, right, in place? Yeah, like, if you, if, if he, he does, he can try to talk to people, and sometimes that works. But there is no ordinance that says that your dog can't run on my land.
Understand that.
Yeah, so.
He can respond, but he has no ability to enforce.
Yeah, there's no enforcement capability. Okay, um. Is a layperson able to draft a legal ordinance? That's, Andrea, that's why we're. That's why we're sticking to, trying to stick closely to the language that the legal VLCT has drafted. A, a ordinance that's a model ordinance that a lot of other towns have adopted. Um, and so the answer to that question is. I wouldn't sign on to something that a layperson drafted without it having a legal review. And if we have an ordinance that can get a legal review, we will make that happen. Um. Questions about the, the vaccine issue, understand that that's, um. Yeah, a- again, lots of different circumstances. I appreciate that, um, and we will, uh, move on to our next topic.
Thanks, Eve.
Yeah.
Can I say one thing real quick?
Yes.
I invite anyone who has any questions regarding what Andrea mentioned there about dogs that fight that may have rabies, I invite you to call me. And my phone number is eight oh two, four, five, one, nine, three, six, three. Be happy to discuss that with anyone who wants to know no more, to know more.
Thank you, Sue. Okay, uh, audit update.
It looks like a.
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, so.
Thank you, Sue.
Good night, Joan.
Thank you, Joan.
Good night, Joan.
Good night, all. Thanks, Joan. Uh, audit update, um, and we have been. Trying to get through and get sign off on the fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four balances. About two weeks ago, uh, we had a conversation with someone who works for the lead auditor, works with Bonnie. We made some progress, Patty and I, we asked for. Uh, them to call us back because there were some additional comments. Technical things like what is the right depreciate, length of depreciation on heavy equipment, things like that. Other more specific, um, accounting, technical debit and credit issues, so we've been through that. Patty reached out, um, again, uh, to try and get these answers, um, so. Once we get those two. Where we probably have a handful of, of questions, once we get that resolved, then. We can then start sending information for the actual audit. Right, so we're still working on the balances, so I think what this highlights is how. Difficult it is to have multi-years where you don't have an audit because it is. It's just, you're doing three years of work in one year. And what that means is it's basically, you know, it's hard.
Yeah.
Uh, for, and it, timing wise, and it can get real expensive when you're doing all of that, and you've got your auditors focused. On three years instead of one year. Granted, it's just balances, but it's still. It's, it's, it's an audit, but anyway, that's where we are, um, and I'm hoping to spend a lot of more time with Patty next week. Everybody knows what Patty's been doing for the last month and a half between town celebration and. Getting September, uh, end of the fiscal year and all that kind of stuff. So anyway, so now. Um, I'm committed with Patty to, uh, chase this down.
Okay. Um. This, a- and this is like, I'll just try to ask this upfront. Do we have a sense yet of how we ended fiscal year twenty-five? A balance or a surplus or a deficit?
Not, no, I haven't spent, I mean, that, that has been really low on my list of.
Okay.
And, and as important that, as that is, but it is an accounting matter, and so as we're working through the accounting. Then we'll get to that, but it is high on the list of things to deliver to the board, and we, Patty knows. That she and I have to finalize all of that stuff so that when we roll the. Excel file forward for budget purposes, we know where we're starting, so that is.
Okay.
The front of my brain in it. Like I say, I like to focus on killing the closest snake, and that is, that's becoming the closest snake.
Okay, all right. But, all right, we're up to hearing of visitors. Jeffrey, iPad.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, cause, uh, my image doesn't come up. I just, uh, I'm glad you did, I'm glad you discussed something with, uh. Uh, Bob Fisher about the, uh, road situation. Uh. I'm kind of waiting on, uh. I certainly did not agree with your, your status of, of, of what was happening. Uh, I've asked for. You know, a couple of things on, uh, the, the tree roots to get an expert opinion. And, uh, I, I certainly was not happy with, uh, uh. Your opinion that, oh, we made a mistake. I thought we had a viable. Option to fix up some of the ditch. Uh, I've been looking around at ditches and whatever, whoever ditched it is ten times more than anybody else got ditched. They put a culvert on Sheer, on, uh, Hatch School Road for a driveway that doesn't exist yet. And it's a normal culvert. It's ten inches down. Mine's forty inches down. I just think. We could have come up with a better situation to get it fixed without all this. Um. Stuff about a private road and a, a town road, and I don't know what that's gonna end up doing. But, uh. Uh, I'm gonna pursue getting that ditch filled in somehow. If that's amenable to you. If I gotta pay for it, I hope I don't. I've already invested sixteen hundred dollars in culverts, and, uh. I was for. I'd love to have my dirt back, and I'd fill it in myself. But you made a decision, and, uh, I have to live with it for the time being. And I appreciate your help if there is any available. And, uh. Hopefully, hopefully the private road discussion will come to fruition, and we'll see exactly what it is.
Right, great, yes, keep an eye out for that. Thank you for your time.
Can I get minutes for the previous meeting? Are there's, uh, is there a hard copy for minutes?
It's on the website.
Yeah, they get posted to the website.
Okay.
Yeah, and we haven't, we haven't reviewed the, them yet. They're still in draft mode. Um, we hope to do that tonight if we can stand to hang out here together for a little bit longer.
Cause I'm a computer genius. If my wife wasn't here, I probably couldn't even do this. Can you transcribe minutes off whatever you post? To get a hard copy?
Um, you know, you could, you could get a hard copy, um, if you could come into the town office. Yeah, if you can come into the town office, um, that's, that's your best bet, because I don't, I don't wanna, I know. I think, I think that we should, we, we should be keeping the paper copies, and I know that that's something Emily and I are gonna try to do some backfilling. But once we have approved them, hopefully tonight, and get those updated, then, then Patty could get you a copy off the, um. And print it here in the office with the, with the town printer.
Okay, I appreciate it. Can you see me?
Can't see you. That's okay, we, we.
I mean, I, in the very beginning, I had a picture of myself talking to you. Now, it's not available.
Yeah, there's usually a little icon that looks like a camera called video, and I don't know why it's not working on your iPad. I'm not very good with Macintoshes.
But hasn't, it hasn't worked for any of the participants, from what I can see, all four of them.
Yeah, I think, I think you have to make a, you have to make a conscious choice to, to turn your camera on, and it's different for different computers. All right, Linda, I'm gonna ask if you, Linda Hubner, if you would like to speak.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um. Yeah, just one quick thought before I forget, uh, Jeffrey's comment reminded me. Um, and if Stephen Chait is still around, he might be able to speak to this better than I, that a culvert went missing. That had been removed, um, from the Beaver Deceiver and Hatch School Road that would be useful. To use at Green River Road where the beavers are active now, and, uh, none of us know what became of it, so if any of you do. That would be helpful to share with the Conservation Commission and the Beaver Working Group.
Where the box culvert was.
Yeah, no, Linda, we, that's the first.
I saw a whole pile of them there, cause I, that's the way I come to Halifax. A couple of weeks ago, there was a whole pile of culverts there. I don't know. You know, how many there were, but, uh, it would seem odd, and they weren't fifteen inch ones either, like I had to buy. But they were on the side of the road.
Well, um, hey, Linda? Yeah. When's the last time you saw the culvert there? Um, that would be a question for Laurel. I would have to go through my email to answer that, but I'll tell you what, I can do that after. You know, try to get back to, to you, um, if I can learn more, rather than take up more of your time right now. Yeah, that, that could be handy, and you can ask Laurel to give you a call. Okay.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, um, so if, if I might, just, uh, one other quick question, I guess, um. I joined tonight mostly because I was curious if you all were speaking with the attorney about the Whitneyville Road cut through and. Um, I know you can't get into detail with me, but this, um, warned visit, will this be on the select board? Website where I find agendas for these meetings, or how, how will I know when? Yeah.
Yeah, site visits are public meetings, and we have to warn them the same way we do other things. Um, what we, what we have trouble doing is recording them when we're out there. We tried to do that with the phone and.
Of course.
And we couldn't get it off the phone, and so, yes, but we, we will warn that as a normal, um, activity and, um, a special meeting. Requires twenty-four hour notice, but we usually do a little bit better than that, cause we gotta get our ducks in a row to fi- find a time.
Okay, another thing, I, you know, I don't want to get into the nuances, but I, I would love to be there when you do that. Because I just feel like we've talked about several different aspects of this, and, um, I don't know if that will be the time to. Follow up with you, or if it'll be a subsequent time, but I, I'd love to be there when you're doing that, if I possibly can.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, I think that makes a lot of sense, right?
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I think it's, I think that's a fair, um, time that we would just let you know.
Should we? Not that we want to put anything else on our plate, but we're here. Can we figure out a time now for that meeting, just so it's like done?
So, yeah, that, that, yeah, that, that's.
I mean, otherwise, you're gonna do it.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have my calendar, but I can be pretty close.
All right.
I think. We should ask everybody. Well, tomorrow's out. Tomorrow is out. Unless it's five of them.
Tomorrow, we have a, I think we have a training session, which is, does not have to be a warned meeting. So we're all gonna see each other again, and in a few hours. In a few hours.
Three hours.
I mean, we should, I'd do it next week, because next week, right now, we don't have anything on the agenda.
And, uh.
That would be.
If I can ever get to make.
No, the twenty-sixth.
That would be, yeah, the twenty-seventh through the thirty-first.
Are you gonna do it morning, or?
So I'm only in town the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. And I, depending on, uh, at the twenty-ninth, I leave at seven o'clock at night.
How about Monday?
Uh, seven?
Monday morning?
Monday morning.
All right, that's cool.
I can do that. At seven AM?
Perfect.
Monday at seven?
Yeah, what's the date? The twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Great. Not PM.
AM. AM.
It'll be dark. Do we, does the road crew have, like, measuring?
I've got a hundred footer.
Okay, all right, so if we need them, that's fine.
Yeah, no, I've got a hundred footer.
All right.
We just walk.
What time did we say, seven?
Seven AM.
Seven AM.
And you folks not only go late at night, but you start early in the morning. That is amazing.
Yeah.
Get it done.
Thank you all for all of the work that you do.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, Randy, for pushing that bait.
Kathy?
I think if you just dumb it down to vicious dogs, dogs at large. I need to use common sense.
Okay.
Coming home the other night in Guilford, there was this little tiny dog running the road, so I'm up and down the houses, who owns it? Cause there's no tags on it.
Yeah.
Mine runs with no tags on, but he does have a tag that says I'm chipped, call my mommy, and it has his address and phone number.
My, my sister has one that's kind of a little bit staunchy, but it says, oh, I'm lost.
And I think that, I think that makes a lot of sense, and I've done the same thing, but there were. I was, I was up around the Hat, where Hatch School and Sherr Hill Connect, and. There was these beautiful dogs running around, and they're feeling, and I stopped, like, do you need help? And they jumped in the window, and they were just being friendly.
Be their way home. I think I know what dogs.
Yeah, so they're lovely. Anyway, just made a phone call, hey. I was out there, so it, that kind of stuff is.
I mean, Fenn never leaves my side. He has anxiety, so.
Yeah.
My son's home, so I can't leave him alone.
Yeah, that's just good, and that's just good neighbor stuff, right? My dog got out and I didn't realize it, and was running in the road. I would want somebody to call me and say. You know.
Yeah.
I don't know who you are, but got your dog, or I saw your dog.
Vicious dog.
Okay, thank you. Steven?
Oh, yeah, there was a reference to a piece of corrugated pipe on school hatch road. I'm not sure it was a culvert. It was part of the Beaver Deceiver. And it was, um, a corrugated pipe that connected one box to another.
That's right, that's right. And that's what we pulled out.
And that's, it was by the side of the road. When I went there for a meeting with the contractor and the state river person.
Yeah.
And it was just by the road. It's not a piece of town culvert.
Okay.
It was.
So it's a part of the Beaver Deceiver.
It was a part of the Beaver Deceiver and it's corrugated pipe, as it were.
But so nobody's seen it since then?
Right, it disappeared.
So I can call Fitzpatrick?
Yeah.
And ask him.
It, it's disappeared, but I just wanted to identify it's not a culvert.
Yes, no, thank you, that's important.
It's corrugated pipe that was a part of that.
How, how, what are the dimensions? So if I call him?
If I were guessing, it's probably about ten feet long.
Oh, wow.
And it was probably, um,
Three feet?
Maybe eighteen or twenty inches.
Eighteen to twenty inches.
Well, I'm guessing, I, I didn't. Pete, Pete might have a better idea because he pulled it out, so.
Okay. Well, I mean, I can make three phone calls, right? But it sounds like Pete doesn't know. He doesn't know, so I don't even call Pete, so he's done. So it's really a question of, I suppose, from a town perspective, I can call Mike, but he, if it wasn't a culvert, probably didn't, but it. I can ask him tomorrow morning. I'm gonna see him tomorrow morning. Um, but then the other one is the.
I just wanted to clarify, I, I don't think it's proper to call it a culvert.
Yeah, no, 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 that's part of the Beaver Deceiver. I think that's right. Okay.
And one other thing I would like to add, um, something slightly different from things you've been discussing. Um, over the last probably month, postal delivery has been an issue. And I'm sure, I don't know how, if people are aware of that or not. It's, the town is divided into two postal parts.
Yep.
There's West Halifax and there's the Brookline area, Zipco. Um, not asking the Select Board to do anything, I'm just asking if people are aware of it. Because postal delivery had, over the last month or so, has become a problem.
Yep.
Um, there had been an issue previously about just having a post office. And so I find it, it's worth being protective of the postal service. I keep asking what's going on. They found someone, they lost someone, that it's a difficulty. But if push came to shove, then it might be useful for the Select Board to be in touch with the post office.
Yeah.
But I'm not asking for that yet. I just wanted to identify.
Said it was. Yeah, so, so, and then after that, I happened to be sitting over there and then there was, there were two people and I didn't know what was happening. The next day that truck got wrecked and apparently that truck is what delivers the mail to people. And so, yeah, so there's a, there's a disabled truck that's sitting still. So here's, here's what I'm gonna suggest. For those people who are impacted by that, it is much easier for me, instead of us having to run around trying to check with people, it's just to say, please post it on Front Porch Forum. That, hey, I haven't had my mail delivered in a couple of days. Please make sure you stop by and check for your packages. Um, and then, and then the other thing is, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a mess. And, uh, and even reaching out again to your federal.
Because people get.
Karen in the post office has been very helpful. There is the limited.
Yeah.
And.
But you might not wanna be too vocal is what I'm saying. That's why neighbors say to neighbors, like, hey, this is a problem, so.
I've talked with folks and actually now.
I would just put it on.
Picking up mail for other people. But it's, it's, it's just to, to raise awareness.
Well, I never heard the killing snake thing that Karen said.
Gotta kill the closest big.
Come to more meetings, because she says that a lot.
She's at every meeting, aren't you?
The only other thing, because I'm gonna leave soon, but um, I was not at the meeting October seventh. But I think Emily's so used to being here, she's got me down as being present, so. You correct the meanings.
Okay.
The minutes, you might wanna.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and I was really bad because I was displaying stuff on the screen for so long that even when I watched the recording, I, I was like, is that Nancy? Is that Nancy? I couldn't even tell that, because there were lots of people, right? So, okay.
No.
It was the week before. Okay, got you the seventh. Okay, okay, alright, got you.
Okay.
Alright. Alright, yeah, your name's just got a permanent place on there.
My kind of appreciation.
Alright, okay, we have approval of previous meeting minutes and we have a Select Board order due. It is eight forty. Um, thank you very much.
Bye Nancy.
My date is leaving.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes. That's cute.
Would you like me to share my screen for the October seven minutes?
Yeah.
Are we still doing those?
Yeah, let's do that one.
Yeah. Um. Can you see Karen?
Can you see?
I can now. This beast, is this Scott writing on the other side?
Not yet. The Grand Information Bridges, yeah. Patty, erase me. You're gonna put it back though, she took a picture.
Did she?
We'll get it back.
That's cute.
Can you blow that up a little bit larger for the old eyes on the other side? Thank you.
Pulling this up here too, if you need that.
Okay, so let's start by asking to take the word draft off of it. And then let's have you take Nancy McCray out of the people who were in attendance at the October seventh meeting. Did she cut that? Thank you. Hey.
Wait, that was the dog ordinance one? No.
That was.
Uh, yeah, animal ordinance. October seventh.
This was, the first thing that we did was we said, hey, we've got this stuff from the committee. Let's, let's make a meeting to talk about it, right?
We briefly talked about it.
Briefly talked.
Yeah, and there were a couple of people in the room, so.
Yeah.
Yes, that's right. That was before the big meeting.
Okay, I was gonna say there were a lot more people there than that.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. No, that was before the big meeting. Doesn't remember, because Caitlin was here.
Yeah.
We talked about dogs and running dogs and bears and.
Well, that's right, okay.
I don't know if this helped for, as an opening sentence to the review dog control. Instead of starting with the Select Board has repealed the original. Um, I think Edie, what you did is you introduced the topic with the history.
Yeah.
Um, and the hi- part of the history was in nineteen ninety-eight, it was repealed as opposed to, it sort of looks like we just repealed the ninety-eight ordinance.
Yeah, well, and actually, um, and actually, the ordinance was written in ninety-eight and repealed in twenty sixteen.
There you go.
But to the point of like, how much of this, you know, did I actually say? I know, I, I know I had a list that I went through, so, but, um, so yeah, let's, let's, uh, say Edwards gave a brief history of the towns.
I had, uh, for me, as I was writing it, um, real, I just said, Edie introduced the topic with a history um, of, the, of, with, with the history of the, the pre-existing ordinance. And then for you, if it was like, and I think that was an important point, I just didn't write it down. The date it was instituted and the date it was repealed, because right now it looks like it was just repealed. The ninety-eight was just repealed and so. That's confusing if somebody just picked it up.
Okay, so, um, so, so far we have Edwards gave a brief hi- history of the towns, um, dot, let's just say, um, dog ordinance. And, um, we can.
Or you can say noting that the dog ordinance was put in place in whatever the year was and repealed in whatever the year.
Yeah, so, um, we can say, um, with, maybe just say with the town's original, so take, just say with after ordinance. And, um, then delete the Select Board has since repealed. Okay, so with the town's original nineteen ninety-eight dog ordinance, then at the end of dog ordinance, say which was repealed in twenty sixteen. So, actually, the second dog ordinance piece, sorry, go to the, go to the end of that line. So Edwards gave a brief history of the town's, uh, uh, dog ordinance with the town's original nineteen ninety-eight dog ordinance repealed in twenty sixteen. Period. Um, the town is trying and then take out, has initiated plans, so we just say the town is trying to create a new ordinance one. So, I think you can just delete and initiated plans, okay? Yeah. Okay.
Are you done with that paragraph? Because I have one other change.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, because there was so much, even, even then, there was a lot going on. So I think the last one where it says, the last sentence, where the committee member emphasized the ordinance's goal of empowering the animal to respond effectively. Um, I, I think what she, what she said, which was to focus on, to focus on complaints. Um, this it. I think, so given some of the temperature around what is said here. Kim wasn't saying, I want to destroy dogs. Kim wasn't saying, I want to do these things. So I don't want something attributed because someone doesn't understand, you know, what was happening. What Kim was saying, my notes are, that she was focusing on when there is a complaint that Kyle is not able to address. Because somebody could read this and say, oh, this person, you know, wants to restrict my ability to have unleashed dogs on my hundred acres.
I mean, I, I, to me, it seems like that's what it's saying already, but to me, it doesn't sound, I think you used the word inflammatory, but.
It could be perceived, that's like, it could be perceived. And that's what I, you know. I would say empowering the animal control officer, because to respond effectively, it, I don't know, it's, it's to focus on when there's a complaint that's not, you know, that's not covered.
Right, but I think the question is what was actually said, so that's.
Is that what she said, Emily, on the tape? Because I didn't listen to the tape.
Yeah, I, um, especially with that word empowering, I think that's, must be one that she had said. Um, I'm sure this is pretty spot on to what the recording says. It's not a typical word that I use.
Okay, no, and empowering, okay.
Yeah.
I mean.
Okay.
Uh, to me, it doesn't seem like it's.
It doesn't, okay.
I, I don't think that's gonna be, um, super controversial.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So under Voices of Hope Closure, um, on the sentence, it says the group redirected its scholarship funds. I think I would take the word scholarship out and just say its funds. Yeah.
And do we need to have it where it says in light of new legal agreements? When we just say the Select Board has decided?
Um, and so, uh, yeah, I think I want to change that sizably because we basically, um, the Select Board is, is not going to claim settlement, future settlement funds is probably a better way to say that. So just that, that last sentence, just take it out entirely. And say, um,
Future settlement funds.
For, for the current, yeah, for, for new settlements. The Select Board will not claim the funds.
Does it still look like I'm sharing my?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
It kinda went out and then back, yeah.
It, it did that to mine too, and this screen here. Move this away from the shared application, but I can stay there. Alright, we'll keep going.
Okay, so, um, let's see, so we wanna put on this, um, uh, next sentence should be, the Select Board is not claiming settlement funds.
I mean, I think they will be sent to the state because that's kind of what.
So I don't wanna say that just because we're, you know, like, I just wanna say we're not claiming settlement funds from.
Will stay with the state's fund or?
Um, it, how about we say the Select Board is not claiming settlement funds, expecting they will go to the state? Because that's what we were told, so, yeah. And, and we should say the Select Board is not claiming new settlement funds. Um, let's put the, the word new in there, um, after, yeah. Because one of the things that, just, this is a side note, but one of the things I discovered is that the ones that we already are getting, some of them go through and we're gonna be getting payments until twenty thirty-eight. So we are gonna have to figure out where to send those funds. But anyway, the new ones, we, I never signed up for and I haven't heard anything more about those. Okay. Um. So under the computer access for PCZBA secretary, um, I, I think I wanna take it out that I was offering my computer. So, um, I would just say, uh, several computers in the town.
I would just say available computers in the town. It's not several computers, I would just say, because they're just, there aren't anything available. It's not.
Yeah, I think, I think I was gonna get to the point of saying, um, there, several computers in the town are unusable, are virtually unusable, so maybe.
I'm just taking out available.
Okay.
I would just say, say computers and, existing computers in town are unavailable.
Okay.
Existing town computers are unavailable. And I still have to talk to Paul. That's one of my drop balls, so I'll, I make myself a note and I'll talk to him tomorrow.
I see, you'll see him tomorrow.
Yeah.
Do we need that second sentence?
I think not. No, take that out, but then change the available to unavailable. Oh, no, it never, it says not, never mind. You're good. You're, you're good. Okay, thank you. Either way. I guess I wasn't reading it. Um. Uh, the listers have a computer they use on Wednesdays. Okay, um. I don't, I don't know how much detail we even need to just say.
Let's, let's just say that.
Listers have a computer they use on Wednesdays. Take out the rest of it. And, and then I don't even know if the previous PCZBA secretary relied on a personal computer or not. She might have used the one in the, in the lister's office for all I know, but.
We don't know.
We don't know, so let's just take that out. Um. And then just put Christopherson will collaborate with Blaze. So to take out the to address these needs, I think. So take off that first clause to address these needs and just, just say Christopherson will collaborate with Blaze. Thank you. Okay.
Sorry, I had a little unplugging my computer.
Oh, don't play with electricity, kid.
No.
My cats still chew on cords. I'm like, come on, you're old enough to know better now.
They don't.
Alright. Alright, I think that piece on Blizzard is okay. You said the first budget meeting, that's good. Okay, town report staffing. I think we need to, to add here, um, uh. I propose creating a dedicated email address, I did, um, I think kind of to cut to the chase of it. Um, Christopherson said she would take care of this and we chose not to hire anybody, right?
Yeah, Emily, I I didn't get a chance to talk to you, but I I pretty much volunteered you and I to quarterback it this year.
Emily's like, thanks.
If you if you can't, then that's that's a whole different thing, but. Um, I just thought it where there were.
Be able to.
I thought I just thought there were too many cooks last year and I ended up having to do the whole thing, pretty much like a fire drill, and I think we can avoid that this year.
Okay, but I just want to also say that that was my concern is, I don't know if Emily's gonna have enough time for it.
We'll we'll work it out, and if if not, we will raise our hands.
But so what I would say is, I would like, I would really like it to say Christopherson agreed to quarterback it, we can even use that term.
That's fine. That's fine.
Yeah, take that, yeah, that last sentence, shorten it to Christopherson agreed to quarterback it. Okay, that's good.
I can definitely help when I can, but I'll be tied up in a month.
Yeah, understand. Okay, um, all right, um. So under Clark Road turnaround junk. Letter, let's take the proposal out. Um, let's just say junk letter, Clark Road turnaround slash junk letter in the heading. Let's. Can we cut off the first sentence and just say Edwards suggested obtaining an easement? And Pike clarified that one is unnecessary, which I didn't believe him till I saw it. Is that the, you know, that the turnaround, the trail is is in the town's right of way.
I do try to be sure about what I say.
Well, yeah, I mean, this is why. So, but like, like lesson learned, right? I'm starting to really be an advocate of two site visits. That we go and we look at stuff together, because otherwise. Yeah, um, okay, um. Okay, I think we can live with the rest of that. You made the motion. Oh, yeah, we had them owl. Okay, on the boiler water feed replacement, I don't. I think we need to take out which is expected to be covered by the MERC grant. The MERC grant's gonna replace the darn thing, but we have to pay for the repair before.
We do, yeah, 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 okay.
All right. And.
And just as a point of clarification, I don't have my, don't have my phone, um, they should be doing the work. First week in November or something, I've already, I've already talked to Dead River and.
Okay.
I'll reconfirm with Mike that he's available, if he's not, I'll go down there.
Okay.
And the MERC grant is good until the end of twenty six?
Yes, yes, yeah, but we haven't, we haven't.
Uh, Mike McConnell did send me an email and they he, they have sent out to. They waited to do all the surrounding towns and they've sent everything out to bidders.
Okay, that's kind of where that, so he sent something out on our behalf to buy that, okay? I thought we were supposed to collaborate on that. Okay, um. So I want to just clarify on this, were there two fifteen foot culverts already put into place, or was it one? Okay, all right, and then I knew there were two more, but I was just not not quite clear on that.
I think for the second paragraph, the whole road isn't private. Um, but this, but the part of the address should be is on the private part of the road.
Okay.
That's probably more descriptive.
Okay, so.
You're good.
Say that again.
Determine that two two nine Wheeler Road is on the private portion of the road.
Okay, um. I think, um. I think I'd like a period before the however, and just say, um. Uh, I just say a right of way permit is required if the. Yeah, so we can just say a right of way, okay, and then in the next paragraph. The second clause in the first sentence says it was on a, it's on a town trail, and there again, it's on a private road.
Yeah.
Instead of town trail.
That's right.
And the next sentence cannot be there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can take out the next, the the town trail thing is.
Yeah, I don't even know where that came from.
Well, yeah, I might have been confused, I, maybe I was, maybe I wasn't, but let's just take that out.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so, and then on the next one, um, we just just say reclassifying a highway. A town highway is a is a complex process.
Well, it's not a town trail, I think we can just take that sentence out.
But I know, I'm saying reclassifying a town highway is a complex process, period.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Yeah, and then the rest of that sentence can go. Okay, I think that's, is that what, good? Okay. Zero initiative. No visitors, correspondence. What is this?
Reviewing the minutes.
Hey, Jer, hey Jeff, do you want to meet yourself with a star six?
Muted, okay.
Thank you, or you can use a little, um, icon, thank you, um.
It won't mute.
Okay, there, there, you got it, it turned red, you're good, thank you. Okay, we got it. Okay, we got the permits, that's good, and scroll down.
With the COVID in today. And what was it you always called it?
Oh, that was a big order, remember that order? Thousand dollars. Okay, um, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from October seventh as amended, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor say aye. Aye, thank you, Emily.
Once it, we all said aye, I forgot to say aye.
I say aye, I said aye.
Oh, yeah, we all did it.
You said, you seconded, right?
Yeah, I think. Trying to.
Okay.
Fast.
Let me talk a little bit about these October fourteenth minutes. I started through them and I struggled for a variety of reasons. Um, first of all, because it was such a, there was a lot, and and I, and I needed to watch the recording again. To have the conversation tonight, so I didn't finish reviewing these minutes. The, uh. Well, I don't even have, let me see if I can look at what I have, and one, one of the things I'm wondering is if we want to like, do a partial run on this and not do the full thing. Um, I don't know how exhausted everybody else is.
I'm tired.
I hate putting minutes off.
I know.
Can I, can I suggest me?
Were really busy, there's, this section here has quite a lot of words in it.
And and I I think one of the things, just to kind of, to kind of talk about this with a little bit of generality. Is I was, I was looking at the paragraphs and I was like, I I felt like, um. I felt like they were a recounting of the story. That came out through several meetings, and I'm not sure it came out that beautifully or that well put together at the start of the meeting, right? So that, so I was looking at it going like, that all might be true, but did I really say that, right? Um, so that's, that's one of the reasons why I'm like, uh, do we even?
Oh, tomorrow's not warned.
Yeah, I know.
Can we do it?
Yeah, no, because it's a training, we have to focus on that and can't discuss other town's business.
Yeah.
Um, let me see again if if it actually opened up here.
Pages was this, four, oh, it's actually not bad. So I was afraid it's gonna be like twenty pages.
I would have guessed.
It seems like there was some that happened at other meetings, but I think it was more so that Edie gave a lot of, um. Recap from what had happened, and plus I was, I kind of. Ended up pooling this whole section into one, um, because I couldn't really see like, uh. Like a breaking point between these two. No, I never got to the second one, we only got to the first one.
Yeah, so let me, let's talk through the first paragraph, at least the call to order, because I have a couple of changes in that, a couple of additions. So if we go.
And I think there's the more people too.
Yeah, so under the, under the call to order, um, after Amanda Ryan. Um, I added Jenny Crocker. J E N N I E, I believe, Crocker. Comma, Steph Pike. Comma. David, does anybody know what David's last name was?
Where was he in the room, do you remember?
I I don't know, he was very messy on the form, and I think it was David.
I mean, I could read everybody I had, but that isn't really, because I just write people down, and it's not like.
Jason isn't an Ashcraft, he's Ashcroft.
Right, yep.
Is Robin Gabriel on there?
Nope.
She called in for a while, she was on the.
Yeah, Robin Gabriel with two Bs, so.
It is lounge, yeah, it's Jeff.
Jeff.
Oh, Jeff, yes.
That's Dan, that's Dan Lounge.
Oh, she's looking up the names.
Yeah, I sent, I sent a picture of this.
It's like David, doesn't it?
Yeah, what, um, what is, um. No, Mike, it's Mike Gabriel. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Mike Gabriel's there.
Is Mike, Linda Lian, is she on there?
Yeah, she is on there, after Nancy. Um, so Diane Lounge was here, Dan Lounge was here.
His wife was here.
Yeah, that's Diane, Diane and Dan, I can remember that pair. And was their daughter there, and I don't know where her.
Oh, uh, yes. Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and was Jeff Lounge also there?
Yeah, he was.
Yeah, but he was, he was originally left.
But it says left, okay.
All right, and I'll add in, I'll add in, I'll stick Diane in here.
Okay.
Was Samantha Adams on there?
Oh, she was too, yeah.
Yes, we, yes, that's right. Yes, yep, that was something I didn't put in here.
Was Samantha Adams at this one? Cause I know she signed on the second.
She signed on the wrong part, but she was here. I've only, I only recently relearned about her. Okay.
Okay, and she's not in there.
Yeah, okay, um, so yeah, this, this person I can't.
Caitlin Lounge spells her Caitlin.
I don't know how she spells it.
Daniel, it's Daniel, not Dan.
This might be Caitlin, Ben.
That looks good.
Okay, so we got that part.
No, oh, she's, I don't.
Yeah, and then, um, yeah, and then I just, I kind of went nutty trying to recreate the first couple paragraphs and said. As I said, while this is is a nice narrative, I'm not sure anything I said was that elegant.
Give yourself some. Thank you, thank you, it was a very lively meeting, I wanted to write it in a way that didn't sound like. I was taking anybody's sides and I was just like in the middle, so.
Yeah, yeah, so let's, if that that's okay with you guys, let's, let's punt on this. I I want to get it right, but I don't want to go through it.
Yeah, I think we want to make sure people there spoke, that we try those, you know.
That they feel heard, right?
Yeah, yeah, so we have to get, you know.
Okay.
As much as we can.
All right, so well, if you could, it's still adjust them on the, um, website with draft two or something like that.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, do we want to, um, approve Lori's, since they might be shorter and.
They're short and sweet, okay.
Yeah, let's do it there.
We got one page. Oh, wait, what are we looking at? Oh, the, it's the fifteenth, right? Uh, oh, does she have them? Or she was just gonna, they're not on the agenda, the agenda.
They're on the website, yeah, they're not on the agenda, but they're on the website, so I, and I said, let's add them if we felt like we could tackle it. To the point of I hate getting behind.
Do you want me to share hers too?
Yes, please.
From the website, actually, I can pull them up from the, uh, she emailed them to me.
Fifteenth, right? No, is it the fifteenth? No. It was last Thursday, whatever.
Oh, you're good.
Okay, so, this special meeting would be on the sixteenth.
Oh, see, I'm thinking I put the fourteenth on, you did put the fourth on there, but it was Thursday, wasn't it? It's Thursday.
It was Thursday, yeah.
Okay, so need to change that to the sixteen, okay? I think on the second paragraph. Um, as stated by Stone, the plow truck proceeds up Clark Road to the end and then swings left. Pushing snow out of the way as as well as straightforward. So I think we're missing out of the way as well as. Yeah, we got the well as part, okay. Um, where there are currently two abandoned trucks.
Yep.
Okay.
In the motorcycle.
Yeah, let's put the motorcycle in there, I I actually put that in the letter. So we're gonna add, um, in the next, in the sentence, Stone also pushes the snow to the right where there is currently junk debris. And then comma tires.
I would, I would say junk comma debris.
Okay.
And then, uh, whatever, after tires.
Comma debris.
Tires.
Comma. Uh, a motorcycle.
Disabled motorcycle.
Yeah. Especially after Keith hit it with the car.
Okay, um. Let's just change the, um. He pushes the, pushes the snow back as far as he could, but that as the snow season progresses.
I was doing that like five in the morning.
Did a beautiful. Did a beautiful job, thank you, sorry, this part, this part of everybody editing your minutes is always a killer. So instead of occurs, we're gonna say progresses, couple sentences. So instead of occurs, we're gonna say progresses, couple sent, couple words from where you are, yep. And then maybe say, and that makes turnaround more difficult. Okay, and then maybe because of the current junk situation. In the next paragraph, there's just an extra space in front of on town, on town trail.
Do we need to have the resident's name? What is our?
I think, I think we should in this case, um.
He was there.
Yeah, and he's listed as being there.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I mean, let's just must say Cunningham. Yeah.
And I just, we have people's names with Google.
From town trail instead of on town trail? Or no, I guess it's in parentheses, so on town trail describes it.
Okay. Um. And. Under Cunningham agreed to the timeline of November fifteenth, twenty twenty five to ad- address the above listed item, let's just add that. One or more select board members. Will attend. With Pike being the coordinator. Cause I think he volunteered. So if, if, if you.
Well, if we do one or more, it can only do two or.
Yeah, yeah, you, yeah, yeah, and you, you would have to just let us know, yeah, if anybody wants to go, let's warn it or, you know, like, that's more likely if it. Doesn't get cleaned.
Yeah, I'd rather just keep this simple. Hopefully, it all works out.
Yep, um. Alright. I'd like to make motion that we approve the minutes from October sixteenth. And amended, so who seconded? Pike, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye, motion carries five oh.
Already.
Nine eighteen.
Yeah, yeah, we have, um, oh, shoot, we skipped correspondence, so let's just go back to that real quick. Um, in addition to these maps that are in Gina. Um, we have. A. Certificate of Liability Insurance, which, you know, just needs to be filed, we have a permit. That I did not get on the agenda, so I'm gonna, but I'm gonna talk through it, uh, I didn't get it on the agenda, it was received October tenth. I didn't see it until past the time when we'd done the agenda, it says sent to Mike Fornier, original, and then it says no check included. This is for um. Uh, Stephen Brown on um. Ten seventy seven Collins Road. And it's, and they had put a temporary driveway in there, this is a request to make the approved temporary drive and it make. Permanent and um. There's, you know, uh, somebody hand wrote on here per Mike Fornier on ten, ten, twenty five, he already spoke with the applicant and told them to talk to the road commissioner. Mike says it looks good, but I was concerned when I first saw it, that there was no money. Right, I'm like, well, we're doing more work, it's gotta be recorded again.
He paid, he paid for the temporary.
Paid for the temporary, but you could have paid for a temporary like twenty years ago.
But this is a new permit.
This is a new permit application. This piece of paper came in and guess what it says on the top, check received. Yeah, so he said, I wanted to add this letter to my. Yeah, and she put down deed reference, whatever, to make my temporary driveway permit. Uh, permanent, I had originally planned on moving the culvert and road materials to my adjacent property on one, one, one. Nine Collins Road, but the new driveway gives me additional access and greater visibility to the road. And I don't wanna spend additional money developing that parcel at this time, as I'd planned to move the material, Mike's uh, Fornier stipulated the cop. That the culvert be twenty by twenty feet by eighteen inches, so it qualifies as a permanent driveway for town requirements, thank you. So, so here's my question, this wasn't on the, on the agenda.
I think we can just, yeah. If, 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 if we're gonna approve it, I think it would have to be on the agenda if we thought this was something that the resident needed to be here for, but if we're just approving it, it's. For the normal course of business.
Do that with correspondence.
I think so.
Yeah, I thi- this was just again, trying to have cross checks um, on the process when I screwed it up. Um, permit location is. Stephen Brown, so the, it's ten seventy. Ten seventy seven.
And what's the date that Patty said the check was received?
Uh, October twentieth.
Okay.
Um, okay, okay, so I didn't, we didn't have to go back and ask for the money, cause it didn't come, select board meeting date is ten twenty one. So what, make sure that this gets recorded um, in the minutes, just because again, it wasn't on the agenda. Um, so, and this is interesting, the permit valid through, not to exceed two years from the approval date, but it's already, the work's already been done. What do I do with that?
I'm sorry, what?
So there's a permit valid through, which expects that they can take up to two years to do the work.
Just in case something happens and he has to, I don't know.
Put NA, cause it's not, it's not applicable.
I g- I guess, and whatever, whatever makes.
Already done, and he's just making it temporary, permanent and.
And Mike's looked at it and said, this is reasonable, so.
Okay, so I'm gonna.
Over to him there, so.
I'm gonna sign this and um, pass it around. And then there's one other thing in here. This is a letter from Mary Brewster. To us on Airbnb rentals, short term rentals on conservation land. She documents a concern that she's had, um, she says she's talked to Fisher. I think we might have talked to Fisher about this also, Karen, I don't.
I mean, I could go back and check my notes.
Okay, cause I, I, it might have been a time that I was on, on the call with um. Tom, to Tom Fox.
Don't remember that name at all.
So it just doesn't ring any bells for you, then I think, um, well, I'll pass it around if people can read it, um. And I can try to reach back to Fisher and say.
We start the gist of it, uh.
The gist of it is she's saying that she thinks that there are ordinances that are not being enforced. And they're in a, in a, what is currently a gray area, um, and I'm, I'm not. She's basically suggesting we need to ask the zoning administrator to deal with it, but I, I think. I think the issue has been brought to me at least before, at with the. With a uh, perspective that I'm not sure whether any action is.
Yeah, and I don't. This is, it's a long letter and I don't.
Alright, so I'll try to get, I'll try to get a memory jog from town council on that one.
You want me to make copies so everybody can look at this? While we're.
Yeah.
I already got one, she gave me one when I was down there.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't need one.
Okay.
Come on, Linda, I'm gonna get you one.
Okay, you feel, feel it, feel it, you need to give me one, I'll take it.
Ron doesn't fall asleep.
I'm tired.
Okay, that's select order orders next up, so, so.
Is that completed?
Maybe Karen has not, I didn't look at.
I didn't sign it yet, but I looked at everything, did Karen, I wonder if Karen looked at it?
It's short.
It is.
Compared to last one, for sure.
Oh, that was a, geez, that was a big, that was a big.
Are you all okay if I hop after the evening?
I think we are, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. And then. Are you host on here before I leave it, cause I don't want it to end.
I'm a co-host, let me um.
Let's see if I can. Host tools.
So I'm assuming we're the one that has all the pictures, but it doesn't give me. Can you, can you try to make me the host instead of a co-host, cause I don't think I have that choice to make myself the co- the host.
Make a host.
Yeah, that'll, that'll keep us rolling, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Alright, have a good evening. Okay, um, so. Okay. She'll put initials on things.
This is, that, that's your original.
Oh geez, you okay?
It's not having workers come in.
Would you get caught? It's no good.
Fingers aren't attached very well.
Well, no, they.
When using your power saw?
I think you are, every time I use mine. I know.
What, a chainsaw?
Yeah, we.
You, you didn't get hurt with one, did you?
No. Then we bought a battery.
You got, you got a little, your kids bought her a little short six inch.
How cute. You do branches?
Yep, and I thought it was so cool. It's pretty good.
Sarah cut a tree down that big.
I had a real gasoline chainsaw.
So do I, I have a small, medium and a large. I'm afraid of the big one, I've got a big one, but I'm afraid of it, I can't lift it, so.
It's like.
Yeah.
It's perfect.
Yeah.
You can cut.
Yeah.
Pretty much any of it, but.
Yeah, I got, I actually got that, I have got the smaller steel. Um, to cut down Christmas trees, cause I'm like, I'm exhausted, I'm exhausted. And they said, and it, and it's an electric one, it's a steel, but it's electric. Yeah, and because wherever we were cutting down trees, they're like, yeah, no, you can't, you know, you can't use whatever you're using. You know, you use those hand saws. Yeah, you just can't do it, I can't do it, anyway, so I've got that little one, which I use that all the time, I love that.
I got the clippers too, battery powered clippers.
I told you not to get those, take a finger.
Well, I know.
My net, my uh, older brother-in-law had those and I used them and I was like, loved them, but I'm like, man, you mess up with that, you do.
I know they're gonna break.
Chainsaws.
They're getting everything from the bakery, do you know if the bakery does like?
Only if they had ordered it.
Okay, yeah, well, they don't, they would have offered.
I don't think we have containers down there.
Alright.
And I'm gonna be here a little bit before eight.
Yeah, you're gonna be here like.
To let.
So we heard seven thirty or something for you to let people in.
Seven thirty, that the time, I can do it.
Paul was hoping for.
I can do it, yeah, yeah, he didn't, nobody gave me a time, but I'm happy to do.
Glad to do it, but I haven't seen.
Nope, I, I will be here at seven thirty. I give you one.
Alright, and once I get these back in order, then I'll read what this is.
Oh, they're not in order.
How was that meeting that I didn't, wasn't able to attend or didn't need to attend, how was that, how did it all go?
What?
Last night's meeting?
Oh, it was last night.
That's really got to what we needed to do, but I mean, there was, you know, just a little bit of like. Who's on first stuff going on, that looked in my perspective.
Basic and straightforward.
Yeah, and, and you know, and talking to Mike, I said, you know, this isn't something you have to be here all day, I asked him to be here at the beginning. Um, so people could talk about. Wh- what the protocol is for you to call who, so the entire world's not calling Mike. And so we can figure out what that kind of chain of phone call is, you know, that kind of thing, and then uh, same with Patty. And I talked to Patty Pithill also and said, you know, the town clerk, people are just gonna naturally call you. Maybe you're home, maybe you're here, it would be handy for you to listen to what you can, and then the door's gonna be closed and you're gonna be there, so I asked Patty to, to sit in. Um, just in case there's, you know, uh, cause I don't know how the whole day's gonna flow, but if we need Patty, like, here's a part. That we've talked about.
But it's not a twelve hour day.
No, it's uh.
Three thirty or, apparently, everybody, everybody was revolting and saying, not gonna participate, cause who has twelve hours?
Well, what are we doing? How we're being actively engaged for.
Well, they, they changed it, but we don't have to be, alright, so we have. We have an order in the amount of five thousand five hundred and fifty six dollars and eighty eight cents here.
I'm sorry, what's the amount?
Five, five, six point eight eight.
Fifty five, fifty six, eighty eight.
Yeah. You signed, you two need to sign, please.
I'll let you do the honors, Jeff.
Alright, and while she's doing the honors. Rhonda, what other? You're gonna do?
What am I gonna do? Well, I know. Can I do it first?
You gotta sign that first.
Oh geez, you're making me nervous here.
My little doggies, I didn't put a diaper on it.
Is he better?
She's a little better, but it's been a.
Can I do it now?
Yes.
Okay, let's make motion that we adjourn.
Okay, Ashcraft, okay, it's been seconded by Mark Johnny, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries five zero, it is nine thirty one P M. Okay, I'm gonna stop the recording and um, end the meeting, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, you, you did this.